Call this meeting to order, please.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Hazard is here.
She's here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker?
Here.
And Ms. Young?
Here.
And I'm sure you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Lady, what's up?
All right. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, Mr. McCosker, you gonna start us? He always does. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have a-
For the approval of agenda, I want to apologize for being a little late. Sessions before this ran over. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Move the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Young, second by Ms. Decatur.
May I?
Will Ms. Hazard-
And I would ask that we pull from consent 9.05 and put it on to action. Approval of the continued participation in the hybrid disability program. It will be a short discussion, but I would just ask that that be pulled from consent.
Are you with you, Ms. Young and Ms. Decatur?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. On page 11, the motion to approve the revised agenda, moving-
Sorry.
No problem.
-the hybrid disability plan to an action item.
Motion to approve.
Is it a aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to staff report. That's the case. 5.01, return changes to the state accreditation program and their implications.
Well, that's me to do. Okay.
Okay. Are you able to use your mouse? Oh, there it is. Yeah, it took it awhile to wake up. Got it. Oh, my gosh.
Good evening, Mrs. Healy, members of the board, Dr. Kizner. My name is Mark Zenger. I'm accountability specialist for Stafford County, and I'm here to provide an overview of the new Virginia accreditation program that we are now operating under. The new accreditation system was fully approved by the governor in January of 2018. The federal Every Student Succeeds Act, which replaced all of our friend NCLB, required the state to incorporate many facets of the federal accountability system into the state accreditation model. The changes under the model include changes to the verify credit requirement for high school graduates, reduce testing of students in high school, and the phase out of several of her portfolio assessments, including VGLA, VSEP, and VAP. And most importantly for tonight's discussion, it changed the way we accredit or don't accredit schools in the state of Virginia. So last year was considered a transition year as we moved from the old accreditation system to the new one. Schools were rated first under the new accreditation system, and those schools that did not make it under the new accreditation system were then looked at under the old system, and they were given the higher of the two accreditation ratings. I'm happy to say all of our schools were accredited as a result of last year's process. Beginning this school year, all schools will be accredited only under the new model. Essentially, what this new model did was it took two different and distinct systems, the old Virginia accreditation system and the old federal accountability system, and it merged them into a single process. Now, the old federal system still exists, but it's really in the background. It will only take effect if a school is a Title I school and is a focus or priority school, which essentially means one of the bottom 37 schools in the state. So for, in Stafford, we're fortunate, we don't have any schools that will be looking at the federal model anytime in the future. So tonight, I'll just concentrate on the state system. This is just a, this chart is just a comparison of the main points of the old federal accountability system and the old Virginia system. And you'll see as you go down, there were a number, most areas were different between the two systems. So last year, the state merged them, and so this green category represents what has been brought together under the new accreditation report. It reduced the number of content areas from four to three. History is no longer part of the accreditation report. It did retain Virginia's fixed benchmarks, rather than the dynamic benchmarks that were changing each year under the federal system. It does incorporate current or overall and eight, currently eight subgroups from the federal system. Beginning next year, we will have a ninth subgroup, which will be multiple racial groups. That's mandated by state law. It says, once we achieve 5% in a particular group of students, we add them to our accreditation report. It retained the current three-year averages, which allows a school to be accredited in each area based on either their current performance or their three-year average. It does incorporate performance and participation. The old state system was performance only. The new system does require a certain participation level. And it retains other academic indicators. A new feature is, in addition to the growth factor, which the state system has always had, it does, it does add some growth factors to give students and schools credit for, for making large strides in their performance. And then finally, another significant change is that all schools are under the new system. There is no division accreditation. We used to have that under the old Virginia system. And again, the federal system only applies to certain low-performing schools.
Are you gonna get into growth a little bit more?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So for each, each school has either six or eight indicators that they are rated on each year. Elementary, middle schools have six indicators. Five of them are academic, and one is another, is a separate indicator. And then the high schools have eight. So they have five academic, and they will have, eventually have three other indicators. The schools are rated at three levels. Level, and they're pretty self-explanatory. Level one is they are at or above the bench, the state benchmark. Level two, they are near or improving, so they've moved up, they've made significant improvement from the previous year, or they're, they're closing in on the benchmark. One caveat to the new system is if a school stays in the yellow for four years, then they will automatically drop down to level three, which is considered below standard. And then level three is performing below the benchmarks. So this is kind of what it looks like. There's a combined rate for reading and writing as, as English, the state groups it together, and there's a combined rate for math. Now, what the combined rate means is that that includes not only the SOL results, but it includes several growth factors I'll talk about in a minute. And additionally, the subgroups, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, are grouped together in an achievement gap group for both reading and math. And then there's a pass rate for science. Science is unique in that it does not have growth groups, but it only has an overall rating. There are no subgroup reporting for science. And then, as I said a moment ago, history is no longer a part of the accreditation model. So the combined rate in the growth factors is something new. We've never seen in either the federal or state system before. And this slide just, it kind of illustrates how it'll work for English and math. So if you look at the diagram on the right of the slide, in this particular example, the school had 60% of its students, those indicated in green, passed the English SOL. And then they had one student who met growth criteria. So that, what that means is that student took an SOL last year and failed it. They took the same, or the next, the next grade level SOL this year, and they still failed it, but they made significant progress. And so the state recognizes the work the school has done and the school has done by giving that school credit for that student having passed. And then the final one is for our English learners, for the reading test. If they don't pass, they don't make growth on the SOL, there's a third measure for them. All of our English learners take the WEDA language proficiency test every year, and if a student has made sufficient progress in increasing their English language proficiency, then we can also be given credit for that student having passed the SOL. So in this particular example, the combined rate goes from 60% based on the assessment to a total of 80% pass rate. Now, both math and English have growth factors. The difference is that the, the English learner's language proficiency is only calculated into the reading portion, does not count on the math part. So here's an example of what I was talking about, where a student, in this case, this particular student scored somewhere between 311 and 330 last year on the fourth grade math SOL. This year, the student scored between 336 and 370 on the same math SOL, and so that student has made sufficient progress to get credited as a growth student. So there's a separate table for math, there's a separate table for English, and then the state has another table for our English language learners, depending on grade and language proficiency. Recovery is a feature that's been retained. It's been in our SOL accreditation system since its inception back in 2002. And that's a case where a student failed last year, was promoted to the next grade level, but passes the SOL last year. And so when the state calculates accreditation, they count that student as two passing students. So it is definitely a benefit for the, for the schools. This is a sample pulled out of one of accreditation reports, and we'll just talk about it going left from right. The passing, the passing column represents the number of students who took an SOL and passed it in that particular school. The recovery column are the ones I just talked about, where the student failed last year but passed this year. So those 41 passing tests are counted twice. They're in the original 979 up there, and then they're also added 41 more times. The next is the growth, so those are students who failed both years but made sufficient growth on the SOL. And then the EL progress number shows the number of students that didn't pass, didn't show growth on the read, on the reading SOL, but did show growth on the WEDA test. And that, when you divide that by the numerator then, that brings out an 84.63 pass rate. Now, you'll notice the system does retain current or three-year average, so the school gets credit for whichever of those two are higher. In this particular place, place, they're pretty similar. I did run some numbers, and last year, our schools benefited, depending on the subgroup and the category, anywhere from 6 to 32% based on those growth factors. So it is huge for our schools as they seek to meet the accreditation standards. So here's the additional accreditation indicators. And again, the elementary school has one additional one, and that is the chronic absenteeism. The high school, or the middle schools also have one, chronic absenteeism. The high schools currently have two additional growth factors. That's the graduation completer index and the dropout rate, both of those. And then, beginning in 1921, '22, there will be a third additional indicator for high schools, which is the college career and civic readiness index. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like. The state isn't done figuring that out, but I'm sure we'll report to you as soon as we do. All right, so those are the indicators. So we get a report, accreditation report, that lists each of those indicators, and, and then it will tell us whether a school is accredited, accredited with conditions, or whether the accreditation is denied. So if a school has all level one or green indicators, or some indicators in yellow, that school will, will be considered accredited. Any school that has one or more red indicators or level three indicators will be considered accredited with conditions. And then the only time a school is accredited, is, has accreditation denied, is when it's failed essentially to make any progress or to implement any of the changes that the state and the division have, have asked it to do so. So here's a simplified version. Next four slides will just show you some examples of schools that are credited and credited with conditions. This is a typical elementary, middle school, and this one you'll see is all level one, they're all green, so this school is accredited. Likewise, this particular school has all green except one, level two, and so this school likewise will be accredited. And the same with this third example. Even though they have two, two indicators in level two, this school continues to be accredited. This is a high school sample, and you'll see that this, this particular school had one indicator at level three, and so based on that one indicator alone, that school is accredited with conditions. All right, shifting gears a little bit, let's talk about the impact on our high school students. It has had a really significant impact on the way schools do business, as well as the high school students themselves. Beginning with this year's freshmen, who entered the school year for the first time in 2018, they will only have to achieve five verified credits to graduate. That's a significant change. A verified credit is where the student passes a course and then also passes the SOL or substitute test associated with that course. Until this year, students going for a standard diploma had to get six verified credits, so that's a reduction of one for those students. Our students who are on an advanced diploma, which is the majority of our kids, had to achieve nine verified credits. So that, that's three fewer verified credits those students have to achieve. The standard credit requirements remain the same. It's just the number of SOLs that the students have to pass that has been reduced. State also made changes to locally verified credit. Along with that, beginning with the, the students who are entering ninth grade this year, any student can get a locally verified credit if they, if they qualify for it. If you're not familiar with that, that is where the student gets close to passing the SOL but can't quite get there, and we're able to, based on evidence from their classwork, grant that verified credit. They also introduced a thing called a special permission, locally awarded verified credit, and that's for students with disabilities who are, who are even further away from passing that SOL, but have been able to put together a sample of coursework, which indicates that they are proficient in that, and then with state approval, we're able to grant a special permission locally verified credit. So that gives us some additional latitude in graduating students and yet ensuring that they're meeting the requirements of the accreditation system. One of the things that has kept our testing coordinators and our counselors busy this year is the changes to who is gonna test in a high school. Under the old system, every student enrolled in an SOL class was required to take the SOL, whether that student needed it for their own graduation purposes or to meet federal testing requirements. With the new accreditation system effective this year, students in high school are only permitted to take those class, those SOLs, they need either to meet graduation requirements or to meet federal testing requirements. The federal government requires that every student take one math SOL, the reading SOL, and one science SOL in high school in order to meet those requirements. Beyond that, students will only take tests that, that they need in order for them to graduate. This year has resulted in about a 15% reduction in the number of SOLs we have given in high school, and anticipate as the, the students with fewer SOL requirements come in over the next couple of years, that number will go down. We're probably gonna be in about the 50% range of total SOLs given into high school. So that's definitely good news for our, our teachers and for our students. And that completes my presentation. Anyone have questions?
Ms. Egan.
Thanks. That's, SOL discussions are always pretty interesting around here.
[laughing]
So this is, these are changes that are being made across the board nationwide?
Statewide.
Just, just Virginia's doing this? So everybody else who is doing Common Core or whatever, they're still doing their own thing?
Right.
It's just Virginia's changing the way they do business?
Yes. The Every Student Succeeds Act has required all states to, to essentially merge their system into the federal system, so each state is, has made their own changes. This represent what Virginia has done.
Okay, great. And you had mentioned that history is no longer part of, of this evaluation?
It's no longer part of the accreditation.
Right.
So schools don't have to meet a certain standard in history.
So are we getting rid of the SOL, the history SOL, or are we keeping it?
We are, we are keeping it. The state had, at one point, said that we could do, make the history requirement by doing project-based assessment. The General Assembly said, no, we're gonna continue with SOLs in history, and they have funded new history SOLs for, for US and VA history at the high school level, civics, and Virginia studies at the middle and elementary. So it's not going away.
Okay.
It's still gonna be a verified credit requirement for students.
Right.
And it will still be reported on the school quality profile, which is the public website, but it's not gonna be part of the accreditation.
Okay. And then, way back when, we used to have, if schools didn't meet the accreditations, we had choice, we had school choice. You could go to another school if they ran consecutively three years in a row, whatever it was, and, you know, you, you could opt to go somewhere else. Is that back in the, in the mix again?
No, ma'am. That went away when NCLB went away and the federal government passed the Every Student Succeeds Act.
Okay.
So there is no choi, school choice involved in accreditation any longer.
Okay. And the LVC credit?
Yes, ma'am.
You had, I saw up there it said, kids with disabilities and 504 plans. I assume you mean they have to have a, an active individual education plan, an assigned IEP that's being-
Yes.
Tended to.
So there's two standards. General education students can get, depending on when they first enter ninth grade, can get between one and three locally verified credits.
Okay.
Students with disabilities or students who have an IEP or a 504 plan are actually eligible to get all of their verified credit through this process.
Got it. Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah. So, and maybe, I'm sorry, my, my, our, our computers went down and we were trying to deal with it. So if I'm asking the same question that Ms. Egan just asked, I apologize. So I was just curious, so are you saying that, for example, if you're taking high school level math in middle school, that then you'll have enough credits, verified credits already, that you don't need to take as many SOLs in high school?
Yes, ma'am. So the, the issue with students who take Algebra I or Geometry in middle school is kind of a double-edged sword in some ways. Those students, if they do take the, pass the course and pass the SOL, they get verified credit to meet that graduation requirement. However, the, the federal government still requires that student to take a math SOL while enrolled in high school.
So they would take Algebra II, but then they wouldn't have to take any more after that?
Correct.
Because they don't have to anyway, so, okay. And then my other question, you said something about English language learners, they can get credit for, or, or help with English but not with math? Do we not need to know English to do math or-
Well-
-understand the instruction of math?
Without a doubt, we do, but the, the way the state has set up the accreditation, because the WEDA test that our English learners take is a language proficiency test, there's four domains, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. It's directly oriented towards reading. So the state has decided that we can only use those growth factors towards passing the reading test.
Okay, so if a student is not doing real well on the WEDA, does that have any bearing on how they do in math, or, or are they still expected to do well in math despite having very poor English comprehension?
That's, [laughing] the state is not going to give credit for WEDA performance on the math test, is what they've decided, so.
Is there still a seventh, is there, this might help Dr. Chase.
Yeah.
Is there still a seventh semester exemption for-
Yes, so there are still a couple exemptions that, that our English language learners have available. If a student has been enrolled in any Virginia school for less than 11 semesters, then that school's SOL scores only count if they pass.
Okay, I was just curious. I, I had a math student years ago who didn't know cups and pints and whatever because they came from somewhere else, and so I was just curious. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions, but are you going next?
No, I'm still trying to get back in. Dr. Chase knocked me off the system.
If I ask a question that Dr. Chase asks, it's because I was helping out here with these computers, but, um, so, oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. So I, I, I know you are part of the assessment and accountability.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I heard you say low-performing schools, but I did not hear you say anything about low-performing students. So with all these new accreditations, with new measures changing, what are we doing to ensure that disadvantaged brown and black children are actually doing better? How, how are we bridging that gap?
Well, I, the, the schools spend a large part of their time every day working on those particular kids and trying to get our lowest performers up to where our largest performers. That's been, that's been our whole focus since NCLB came along, and it continues. I know Dr. Strike and her crew in the LOD department, as well as Wendy Johnson and those folks in student services spend a large part of their time doing that.
So you should be seeing an increase every year, right? Because-
That is always our hope. Yes, ma'am.
So you have been seeing an increase? Is that a yes or a no?
I don't have those facts in front of me right now.
Okay.
Let me just touch upon something. The new account, the old accountability system, there was no growth for individual children. So every school system in Virginia would speculate, okay? And the other part of the growth is a student that might have gotten a 442 in math, and next year, following year got a 431, they still passed, but would one say they showed in growth? A student might have gotten a 310 and then went up to 380, didn't pass, but showed growth. So one of the positive changes with this new accountability system is to answer your question, is now we could look at child by child, and if they were in Virginia school system, if they came to us from another school division, we would be able to track how they did at, say, Spotsylvania, and now they're at Stafford. So right now, the growth is more complicated, but starting now with this new system, we would be able to give you a better answer next time you ask that question.
Okay. Well, let me just make my comment, and then I won't badger you with my questions if you can't answer those. I'm hearing a lot of dummying down from nine to six, and so I'm hearing WEDA, English learners, and no, don't have to take this and take that. I, I think that we need to push our kids. It is not about meeting. I think we need to exceed requirements. So that's what I am hoping, and I know Dr. Kizner, I trust that he's gonna get this done going forward, but that we are actually looking to make sure that everybody is exceeding and not just meeting standards here. The fact that, yeah, the, the, we're testing lower, or we just need to make sure that these kids are actually testing and testing high.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think everybody shares your concerns. I don't think that the intent of the state in reducing the number of SOLs for verified credits is to dumb down necessarily. I think it's to free the students and the teachers to spend more time on instruction to improve student performance, rather than spending so much time preparing for, for tests.
Got it. And my last comment is just that I saw on the board chronic absenteeism and dropout rate. There's correlation with having these kids out of class, out of school on referrals, or, you know, sent home. We want kids in school studying. We want them to be taught, and so we need to look at that, make sure that these kids are in class, and that will reduce the absenteeism. Making sure that the teachers know that all kids need to be in there for teaching, not just out, because they don't want a particular child, or they're rowdy, or whatever the case might be. So that's my comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Decatur? I have no questions. Thank you. Ms. Hazard?
Probably just comments. Most of my questions were addressed. I know last year, when I'm working with the VSBA Legislative Committee, Fairfax brought forth a comprehensive plan for our English as a second language learners. They, I mean, it was like seven pages of single-spaced type. Because I share the same concern that Dr. Chase does. If our ESL learners are only getting some credit for making progress in English, I, I'm just wondering if the state has really thought that through, and I know that you don't, you're not here to defend it, but I'm wondering if that Fairfax proposal, if they may be bringing it back. But they really were trying to say, you know, we have to look at this broadly. We wanna assist our students, but then to say, well, you failed your science or everything else because you can't read for it. I just think that's something we as a board, or even the Virginia School Board Association and others, may want to continue to look into. I think my only other comment is this focus on growth and, and other things, and the individual student. I guess my broad comment is we really have to make sure, we're looking at our class sizes to make sure that those factors can occur, and so that would probably be my only comment. But thank you.
Thank you.
It's comprehensive.
Thank you for a good report.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right, that brings us to awards. We have three recognitions tonight. The first one is Mr. Joseph Lewis, the principal of Stafford High School, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. It gives me great pleasure to recognize Chef Evelyn Sussman, the culinary arts teacher at Stafford High School. She is, was having, having to leave because she's taking a class this evening. Chef Sussman will receive the Innovative Educator of the Year Award in the Secondary Culinary Program category from the Idaho Potato Commission during the opening ceremony on June 20th, 2019. The commission was impressed with how the Stafford High School Culinary Arts Program goes above and beyond the classroom experience by exposing students to the industry through work with community events, field trips, on- and off-site work opport- work with community events, field trips, on and off-site work opportunities, and getting hands-on experiences in many other ways. Congratulations to Chef Evelyn Sussman.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and we had an opportunity, many of us last week, to experience Chef Sussman's work for the community when she fed our honorees at the banquet. And thank you for hosting us at Stafford High School as well, Mr. Lewis and your staff. That brings us to Ms. Carrie Neely, Chief Elementary School Officer, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. It gives me great pleasure to recognize one of Stafford County Public Schools' elementary schools. Hampton Oaks Elementary was announced as a school of promising practices in character development for 2019, 2020. Character.org has certified 231 promising practices to organizations and schools from across the United States, as well as from Brazil, Colombia, Haiti, Mexico, and Uganda. This year's practices include unique approaches to comprehensive character development, peer mediation, and conflict resolution approaches, effective strategies for developing leadership and service learning activities that build community. Character.org administrators, the certification process showcase innovative best practices that are having an impact across the nation and abroad. The Promising Practices Program highlights what's going well in communities across the United States and the world. Event organizers selected Principal Alan Hicks and Assistant Principal Nicole Ochs to present at the 2019 National Learning Forward Annual Conference. This conference is held in St. Louis, Missouri, sorry, Missouri, in December. They will present on family and community engagement. Main topics will include school community and the Hampton Oaks House System. Organizers of the event selected 800 people out of 8,000 applications to present at this week-long conference. Will Alan Hicks and Nicole Ochs please come forward? And I believe they have some other staff members joining them, we'd like to invite them forward as well.
So I'm going to introduce my staff real quick. First I have Ms. Hernandez Flynn, Ms. Shemensky, Ms. Roth, Ms. Pearson, Mr. Jarski, Dr. Benjir, Ms. Coon, and Ms. Ochs.
She's got her last photo for the year before she leaves us.
Thank you.
We'd next like to recognize Ms. Kenya Butler, Principal of Park Ridge Elementary School, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. It is my pleasure to recognize our dynamic Park Ridge Elementary music teacher, Sidney Johnson, please come forward. Sidney applied for and was awarded a professional development grant from the Virginia Music Educators Association, Virginia Elementary Music Education Association. The grant funded a workshop that Sidney hosted at Park Ridge for all elementary music teachers, not only in Stafford County, but in the VMEA District 15. More than 20 music teachers attended an informative and fun session entitled Inclusive Practices with Dr. Alice Hamel. Dr. Hamel is widely known as a music educator, author, and scholar. While in Stafford, Dr. Hamel shared her expertise and knowledge in the hands-on workshop of best practices for making the elementary general music classroom an inclusive environment in order to best instruct our students with special needs. Participants who intended the workshop said things like, "I learned more about how students with autism process and react to certain things in different ways I can approach a song so that it benefits more students." Others, "I really got a lot out of the workshop and look forward to trying some of the techniques and methods in the future." Sidney's leadership and grant writing skills enable her to bring this world-class educator to our teachers. Please join me in recognizing Sidney for her leadership and service to the teachers and students of Stafford County Public Schools. Thank you for honoring this fantastic music educator.
Thank you, we'd like to congratulate those who received awards tonight, whether they were with us or not, and move on to citizen comments. Dr. Chase?
Sure. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairwoman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose, topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools' Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. We have four people who signed up to speak tonight, I'm going to call those names, and when those four people are finished, anyone else that would like to address the board is welcome to come forward. After you speak, there is a sign-in sheet on the ledge there that we ask you to sign in for the records. The first speaker is Betty Huntsberry, Beth, I'm sorry. The second is Al Watkins, the third is Curtis Ames, and the fourth is Tom Intorcio. Can you correct that, is that good enough? Close.
Intorcio, that's.
Intorcio, okay. All right. Ms. Huntsberry.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, School Board, Dr. Kizner, so much for the opportunity to speak to you again. Last time I was here, it was because I saw the news story about the young girl who was left during the lockdown drill. Three minutes isn't very long, so I'm going to, I'm going to have to shorten my story, but I emailed you so you know what happened to my child. Or if you haven't seen the email, maybe you check your email, you will. It's important that you know, and it's important that everyone knows, that my daughter has given me permission to use her name and her pronouns. It is never okay to discuss a student without permission. Emma came out when she was 14 in Mississippi, rural Mississippi, and I'm from Mississippi originally, although we've lived all over the world. I didn't know what to expect, and she received nothing but support. Nothing but support, not one thing changed, except, oh, okay, and life went on. She went to see her counselor at Nonview High School, and the reason I have noticed is because I don't want to get the names wrong. Ms. Iozai, hopefully I said it right, I'm telling you, could not have been more supportive, immediately emailed every teacher and said, "Scott would like to go by Emma, and she would like to use her, her, hers pronouns." And overwhelmingly, the teachers were supportive. Emma felt supported, she felt safe, she felt like the school cared about her. I received a follow-up phone call from Mr. Cook, who said, "How can we best support your student? What can we do to make this easier? How can we help?" I received a telephone call from Dr. Simple, exactly the same. We did a conference call, and during that conference call, we had the ROTC folks in the room, and that is where the problem is, and it was horrific. My child was shown graphic images of mutilated genitalia. He was threatened, he was in the locker room, people tried to see if he still had the body parts, she. This went on and on, and my child asked me to please let him/her handle it, I still get the pronouns wrong, I'm sorry. Obviously, I had to step in when I realized the graphic nature of what was going on, and the ROTC department did not respond very well at all. It was a drastic failure in leadership, and I say that as a daughter of a retired general, a military family with three children serving, and a son who is a GOLBA recruiter and instructor in military science at a major SEC university, who told me this, "We shut down JRTC programs for this." So my message is, y'all can sit here and argue all day about this? What if we get sued? Oh, no, this doesn't matter, you can get sued with or without the document. How can we be, how can we be arguing about this?
Thank you.
These are our children, these are our children.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Kizner, Chairman Hilli, members of the board and other school leaders. My name is Al Watkins, I'm a Colonial Forge teacher, an SEA representative, and I live just down the road a piece here on Hope Road. Okay, let's get right into this. I endeavor to continue to try to assist our staff members, whether they be school-based or central office staff, to work together and make contract time clear and concise, trying to address all concerns as they might arise. Like most years, this year's had some challenges. Through civility, transparency, and effective communication, these challenges can be met successfully. The introduction of the Service Salary Calculator today will assist greatly to improve things, but in instances where it does not seem to work properly, we've asked our staff to please reach out to Human Resources so that they can provide assistance. That's all my verbal piece for tonight, thank you very much, probably the shortest I've ever spoken.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Chase, School Board, Dr. Kizner. I appreciate that the, our citizen comments follow the awards and recognition, because sometimes we come up here and we're all negative, and then we get to see the good things that everybody has done in the room, and the teachers and all that, so thank you again for everything that you've done. And mine's going to be a positive comment to you, and short and sweet. I just wanted to recognize Ms. Jennifer Grigsby, who's Director of Commonwealth Governor's School, for the way that she recently acted on a situation in the classrooms there at Colonial Forge. She did something in a proactive and positive manner that was immediate, that had a direct impact on both my student and the rest of the students in there, and I just wanted to say thank, publicly thank her in front of you all.
Chair Hilli, Superintendent Kizner, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight to speak. My name is Tom Intorcio, I represent the Virginia Catholic Conference. We represent the Diocese of Arlington and the Diocese of Richmond, and I'm here to comment today on 4107, the policy that's being proposed in regard to discrimination, generally discrimination issues. The first point I'd like to just make is, is that I have read 2420, and I know that this is a, this is a replacement for 2420, as outlined in the, in the agenda. And so I just wanted to comment, first of all, just on, you know, overarching issue of what you're about to embark in, in terms of just this massive policy amendment that you're considering. First of all, allowing children to choose which restrooms, locker rooms, showers, or other private facilities to use, you know, does not necessarily protect the needs of all children in a, in a public school, and we've, we've observed that in a number of contexts and different, different districts throughout the state. Other children, particularly teenage girls, often feel uncomfortable when they encounter a member of the opposite sex in traditional private changing or, you know, other sensitive spaces. Children in particular, adolescents, can experience hypersensitivity to situations when these natural safe space boundaries are dismantled. In particular, teenage girls who have been victims of child abuse or other forms of sexual, sexual violation are particularly vulnerable to mental or emotional trauma when biological males are allowed access to girls' locker rooms, shower rooms, and other intimate settings. So we, you know, we want to, we want to, you know, represent the, the folks that can't be here tonight after Memorial Day weekend, maybe on, or on vacation still, especially those parents that, you know, may not be aware of this, this major change, and I appreciate the thoughtful way that you're approaching it, and we certainly, you know, we appreciate the methodical way you're approaching it, so. And, you know, it's just also important to note that, that, you know, in regard to the welfare of all children, you know, you know, for, you know, whatever one's views are about gender identity issues.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you so much, okay. I'll yield back.
If you'd like to submit comments for the record, you could give those to the clerk. Anyone who's spoken tonight is welcome to give comments to our clerk, and they'll be put in the record.
Thank you, Chair Hilli.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'll sign on when I'm done. I'm Dana Brown, I live at 41 St. Williams Way. I've only got three minutes, so I've got a lot to say, so that means I'm going to have to come back next time and talk some more. I'm going to skip around a little bit on your agenda, and the first thing I wanted to talk about was 11.09, criminal background checks. I think what you have is not sufficient. I think you need to run a background check every five years, just like the federal government does. You cannot solely rely on the honor system of self-reporting. We have learned that here in Stafford the hard way, haven't we? I spoke with Dr. Benson about this before he left, and he agreed that a one-and-done approach was not sufficient. Then he left. So please, carry the ball on this, we really need to be revisiting them every five years, it's not a big deal on their anniversary date, it just gets ran, it's not, I went down to get fingerprinted for a field trip last week. It took me, time I parked, got in the building, back in my car, less than five minutes, so it's not a big deal. The next thing, item 10.02, restorative practices. In a word, no. The last thing I think you should do is force a victim to re-confront their bully and tell them how it made them feel. I think you're setting up the victim to be victimized all over again. At a previous meeting, I heard the superintendent say that it was the school's job to parent the child at school. It's not the school's job to parent my child, that's my job. Your job is to teach academics, my job is to parent. I don't want you deciding what's socially wrong or socially right for my child. And just to give you an example, I didn't appreciate it when my daughter's teacher told her class. told her class that, they spent a long time discussing this, that we needed to let illegal immigrants in the country and help them and do anything we could, and anything else was wrong. Well, that was her opinion. That was not appropriate to be pushing on her personal brand of justice on the classroom. I want you guys to stick to your job and don't try and do mine. Don't parent my kid. Also, 11.08, you didn't have the scheduled work session today that you were going to have, so I hope you're going to defer this tonight. I'm also worried that it appears, the appearance, that you're trying to covertly slip some important policy changes in at the end of the year, when no one's here. There's no mention about any important policy changes on the website, except buried in this agenda. You mentioned things like Arbor Day, that's spotlighted on the homepage, but a major policy change proposal, that's radio silent, there's nothing. This needs to be discussed in September when everyone involved is here. Please don't do like you did with the calendar last year. People are still mad about that. Not just me, but there's a lot of people, because you guys waited till everyone was gone and then did it. And that's what it looks like you're doing this time, so, thank you. I'll be back next time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board?
Good evening, members of the board. I'm just here to continue to press the issue of a later start time. And I came to, under suggestion of one of the school board members, I don't remember who it was last time, to see what other school districts are doing. So I did that, using other areas of Northern Virginia. I have a list with me of Northern Virginia high school start times that are later than the same and earlier as Stafford counties. What we find is that Stafford County is one of only a couple other school districts in the area that actually start below, before eight o'clock. So I'm about to read off a list of counties and cities in Northern Virginia that start later than eight o'clock. Alexandria, Arlington, Fairfax City, Falls Church, Manassas, Fairfax County, and Loudoun County. I would say that Fairfax and Loudoun Counties are more important than the cities, because they're smaller and they don't have so much issue with transportation and busing, with the only schools that start the same, at the same time as Stafford County is Fredericksburg and Culpeper. So let's look at what these two counties did. First off, Loudoun County High School started at 9:15 and go to four o'clock. Yikes, that's not good. We don't want to do that, let's throw that one out. Fairfax County, let's see what Fairfax does, the richest county in Virginia by far, with all the money. 8:10 is when high schools start and 9:20 is when elementary school starts. So it looks as if they're just pushing back what we did by 20 minutes. That seems workable. I think we can do that, because you just take everything that we already do and you just push back 20 minutes. And again, you know, no right to complain if people's, if, you know, kids still go to bed later, that's on them, but, you know, people like me, we love to take advantage of that. So if Stafford can replicate Fairfax on this one, you don't spend any money, that'd be great. Also, just a couple other comments I have. I know they were talking about the changes for requirements of graduation and the federal government's requirements. We have this thing called a Tenth Amendment, and that says, "The power is not delegated to the United States by the Constitution or prohibited by it to the states or reserved to the states respectively or to the people," which means that the state regulates how students graduate. But then again, there's federal funding, so I just thought that was funny, I just wanted to throw that out there. Next up, I talked with Dr. Kizner about the cell phone policy change last meeting, how they wanted to, how you wanted to change that, and I talked to him about having work sessions with students after school. I just want to make you all aware that if you want to change how students are using their cell phones, it might be a good idea to talk with them about it. That's just my two cents on that one. And lastly, this one should, this one's just a complaint, but, you know, I was taking the bus home this morning, it was awfully hot, it doesn't have air conditioning. If we could get some buses with air conditioning, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Good day to all, my name is Inol Gillen, I am the parent of two Stafford students, ninth grader at North Stafford, sixth grader at HH Pool Middle School. Good day to the chairwoman and members of the board and Dr. Kizner. I am here to bring attention to the painful and negative effects of implicit bias against students of color. I have been dealing for this entire school year with a math teacher who is incredibly biased against my little sixth grader, who has moved from fifth grade in Park Ridge, I'm sorry Mrs. Butler left, she could attest to the fact that he was an excellent math student for his entire elementary period, and he moved to seventh, extended math at HH Pool, and was consistently told by his math teacher that he was lucky to be in that class. And with every incident that would be common to 11-year-olds, she told him that she would bump him down to a different math grade. If he was ever late with any assignment, she would tell him, if you wanted to stay in this class, you would do X, Y, or Z, consistently threatening to throw him out of the class. It chipped away at him and picked at him for the entire school year, and it became intolerable the week before spring break, when he contracted strep throat and stayed away from school from Monday to Thursday on doctor's orders. He went into school on Friday, she was not at school that day. I am a parent, I consistently go to school to collect my children's work when they are absent from school, so that I can give them that work to do at the first sign of health improvement. Because of work obligations, I couldn't go that week. That week immediately following spring break was followed by spring break, and then the schools in Stafford had the Monday off for teacher workday. When my child returned to school on Tuesday, he had to collect work from his math teacher, plus all his other subjects, to catch up. She was told by his math teacher that she wanted that work by Friday. So my child had to learn concepts that he missed, catch up with that work, and keep up with the current work, for math, in addition to his other subjects. When he didn't hand that work in on time, she, he did hand it in eventually the following week, when he gave it to her, she gave him four zeros. In addition to that, she gave him detention for every single day of that week. It broke my child. Last week, he was, this gets me very emotional. He came home and he said to me that the pressure was so great in school, that he was concerned that it would be easier for him to be dead than do, than deal with her on the morning, okay? He wanted to be in a coma and never wake up again, rather than deal with her. So now I have to spend time and money to get my child counseling for suicidal ideation because of the school teacher that picked at my child every day of the school year because of the color of his skin.
Can you sign in, please, on that sign-in sheet? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and come to board reports. Discipline committee reports, student discipline, any? Dr. Chase?
On May 9th, a committee of the board meant to consider one student disciplinary matter. The committee suspended student A for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year, with all but 12 suspension days held in abeyance, conditioned upon the student being of good behavior.
Do we have any other committee, board committee reports?
The Fab.
No? Dr. Chase?
Okay. The Finance and Budget Committee met on May 20th. We discussed a number of items that will be coming to the board in the future. We discussed the current caps on employee leave for staff hired under the hybrid plan. There are currently no caps for employees hired before the hybrid plan. Our current cap for hybrid employees is 24 days. This is not consistent with our surrounding counties. Prince William, no cap. Spotsylvania, 240 days. King George, no cap. Caroline, no cap. Staff believes this is making us less competitive when trying to attract good employees. The Fab C asked Dr. Kizner to have staff return to us with a recommendation for how to adjust our current policy to improve our competitiveness and make Stafford County a more attractive workplace. We discussed the need to develop a compensation plan for middle and high school teachers who carry a heavier teaching load than the state standard load. They will bring us a proposal in the near future. We had a preliminary presentation on projected year-end savings and saw this list of proposed projects that might be funded with some of these savings. Finance is working on trying to move Stafford County Public Schools to using e-ticketing for events and to generally reduce the use of cash. And finally, we reviewed the FY '20 budget process and discussed areas that we think are important for next year's budget. And I would just have the rest of the board take a look at the agenda packet for more information.
Dr. Chase, any other committee reports? Ms. Hazer?
Ms. Hilli, I was just going to suggest that perhaps we should, as a board, approve our consent items, so that Ms. Dr. Kizner, during his superintendent comments, can make some announcements that will be covered in our consent. It was just a thought we could potentially do that.
Any other committee reports? I wanted to discuss with the board the board committee reports to the board. Dr. Chase and I, at the agenda meeting, were discussing this with Dr. Kizner and our clerk, and we have seven committees that are going to be making reports to us in the month of June. Normally, we spread it out, sometimes we have some in May and sometimes we have some in July, but because of the short summer, we want to get them all in in June, in case there is action we can take to start with the new school year, and we didn't have any that were ready for May. So we had discussed, and this is something, you know, I have to say I've talked about for years, having a special time just to meet with the committees. So we had talked about having a special call meeting at six o'clock before our seven o'clock meeting, where the committees could present to us, and that meeting would be videotaped and presented on the television station. But we did receive an email today, and it was from one of our committee chairs, who, let me say, at least my interpretation was, felt that we were treating this as not important, or not as important to be in the regular meeting. And I just want to make sure, for the record, everybody understands that it was an effort to raise it, to, you know, address the committees on their own, rather than, you know, in the midst of, you know, an agenda that we have that, you know, is generally quite crowded. But if there is a desire on the parts of the committees to be part of the regular school board meeting, that's fine, you know, we can put them in there. Is there a preference for the board, or do we want, you know, our clerk to contact the committees to see if they have a preference? If we had it in a special meeting, they would have the advantage of having our complete attention. They wouldn't have to sit through, you know, other things. Of course, they'd be welcome to stay for the meeting, and could be done before our meeting starts. But if the board prefers having it in the meeting, or certainly if anybody in one of the committees wants to be in the meeting, you know, that's fine. It's just going to be placed, you know, within the agenda, and I'm afraid we've got a lot coming up this year, particularly, again, this short summer is really going to be putting more, I think, on our agenda than we're even used to. But we have two meetings in June, and the intent is that we have all seven of those committee reports to the board in June. So if there's a preference by the board, just to put them in the committee, in the meetings, we can just go ahead and put them back in there, or if we want to, you know, make an offer, have it separate, we can do that.
Why don't we get feedback from the committees? I will go with the committee chairs wanting to be in the regular, because I don't want to lose my committee members, so.
I would like to know if, in either scenario, are they still limited to the 10 minutes? And the reason I ask that is because if I were subjected to 10 minutes back in, oh crap, 2009, I think my presentation, Susan Randall and I gave a presentation on the redistricting, or the renovations for the elementary schools. That had to be at least 20 minutes, and it was important. And the board actually listened to us, but they, we needed the whole 20 minutes to kind of go through Mr. Heran's options, and what was good, what was bad, and so on. So my question, back to my question, is are they going to have the same amount of time in both of the scenarios? Because the CIP stuff is really important to me, anyway, and I would, I don't want to just limit them to 10 minutes. So if we can, whatever scenario gives them the most time and the most opportunity, I think I'm leaning towards, because I, they've got a ton of stuff to offer and I want to hear it.
Well, I mean, we can extend the time. I think we've tried to limit, while it's within the board meeting, because the agendas are so full. Certainly, whether it's in a special meeting before a meeting or in the board meeting, we can extend that time period. For me, I focus better when I'm just looking at, you know, a committee. If I'm, if the committee is within, you know, the broader umbrella of the whole agenda, it's just, we're trying to balance and, you know, get all these things done. But I certainly, you know, want to show respect for the committee, and there was no intention at all to imply that these reports are not important enough to be in our meeting. In fact, it was the exact opposite, that they were important enough to merit their own meeting. And I, we have an hour, so I think we have one committee that definitely is going to want to be in the meeting. So that gives us three other ones for each one. We could certainly extend it. Some may not need, you know, more time.
That's true, that's true. But, and I also want, as we consider this, I just want everybody to keep in mind, too, that the CIP, if you all remember, we had like 40 people, some crazy amount of number of, so what they've done, how they began the school year, was is they broke them down into kind of sections of what our CIP addresses. So, you know, big projects, little projects, that type of thing. So they're going to, they're definitely going to need more than 10 minutes to cover all of the items that they've looked at and investigated and so forth. So as you guys are considering this, I just want you to keep that in mind.
And I'd suggest that we ask the committees how long they need for their presentation, and then add to that at least an opportunity for us to ask questions or make comments after that. But yes, I think if they need more time, we need to give more time.
Ms...
Yes, Ms. Hazer?
My comment would be, I believe in the past, we have sort of where we had on our agenda, our staff reports. I think our advisory committees, I know we've talked so much about wanting to engage people, and so I do think having them near the beginning is not a bad place to insert them. You can decide before or after citizen comments, I think we can go either way, but I would think before, because I do think that for anybody who is coming and watching, hearing that there are people engaged, I do believe, though, doing them at the beginning of the meeting, if there is really among the board members, and I don't know if this is a crazy idea, do we start the regular board meeting on, in June because of the length of items? Do we start at 6:30? I think six is tough for some of our members of our community to get here, just something to consider. I don't know.
You took the words out of my mouth, like, why can we not start earlier?
In effect, that's what we'd be doing if we had...
Yeah, no, I'm saying the school board meeting, start the school board meeting earlier versus saying we have advisory committees, because these committees have been meeting all year long. They have important information they want to give us, and I think it's only fair that they get that time and attention, providing that we do something with the information also, which is something that I talked about last year. So I'm for inquiring at the committees, find out what they want, and then, there's seven of them, you said, find out how much time they need. In some places, you know, you don't have a PowerPoint slide with 40, I mean, you condense it, and, you know, give everybody their time to be addressed.
Right. I know we have, what, 11.01 through 11.09, so that means we have hypothetically at least nine action items for discussion at the next meeting, which is the first meeting in June, which is the meeting right before graduations.
Any of these coming?
Mr. Cater, do you have any comments?
All for making a decision and moving on to these matters. Sounds good, I agree.
Okay, Dr. Chase, all right. So do we want to have our clerk contact the committees and see what their preference is?
I think that's a good idea.
And if they're none, that if they all want to do it at the meeting, we'll just start the meeting. I think we rule... I think we really would have to change a policy or make a special exception to start the meeting early. But by doing it the way we had talked about doing it, it would be a special call meeting, which wouldn't be changing our regular meeting time.
I think we've done that before, haven't we? It was a long time ago, but I think, I think when Nanette was here, I think we started in the, one of our summer, one started early. So we might want to, right?
It was when they were doing work here and we had the meeting over there.
That could be.
That out for us and we can get that noticed.
Okay, we got that. It's all on you, Madam Clerk. All right. All right, so we have a request by Ms. Hazard to move the consent agenda ahead of the superintendent comments. Any objection to that? Hearing none? Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Move that we approve the consent agenda?
Okay, motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, Dr. Kizner, you have superintendent comments.
All right. I'd like to welcome and introduce two.
I was about to get there.
Two new assistant principals. And even though I'm here for eight months, I told them that this usually is in the first 20 minutes of the agenda. And that's how it used to be, but not in Stafford. So I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal for Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School, Mr. William Kuhart. I'm sure I messed up your last name. Will assume the position of AP at Kate Waller. Mr. Kuhart, Kuhart, how you say your last name?
Kuhart.
I knew that. Is currently a fourth grade teacher.
Could you stand up so we can recognize you, please?
I'm going to call you Bill.
Stand up.
Come closer so they can see you. He has, he's a fourth grade teacher at Kate Waller Barrett. Been in that role since 2013. As a classroom teacher, Bill has worked collaboratively with special education teacher and content specialist to ensure success for his students. He attended numerous professional activities, including the Ron Clark Academy and Justin's Renaissance Conference. Mr. Kuhart has served as acting administrator in the absence of both his principal and system principal. He's also attended several teacher recruitment events at Stafford. He began his teaching career at Colonial Beach Elementary School in 2011. He received his Bachelor of Arts degree in history from Slippery Rock University in Pennsylvania. His post-baccalaureate elementary ed certification from Robert Morris University, again in Pennsylvania. And he is completing his master's degree in ed leadership at George Mason University. Welcome. And did you bring somebody?
Woo! My beautiful wife, Robin, and I brought my mentor and friend.
Very good.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mark, okay. Come up front, too. Okay, this is Mr. Mark McGelwee. He will assume the AP position at Gale Middle School in July for the current school year. He's serving as a teacher on, this is a little scary, special assignment and special education department chair at Stonewall Jackson High School in Prince William County. He has six years of experience as a special ed teacher of students with learning disabilities and autism, both at the high school and middle school levels. As a teacher with autism, he developed and executed a peer buddies program where students of high academic standing worked on a daily basis with students in his classroom. Mr. McGelwee's developed and currently chairs the social media team at Stonewall Jackson that communicates positive news about the school. In addition, he supervises the credit recovery program for seniors and serves as the president of the school planning council. Prior to his career in education, Mr. McGelwee served as a legislative correspondent to Congressman Frank Wolf for two years. He earned his Bachelor's of Science degree in public administration with a concentration in criminal justice from James Mas University. He's also earned a Master's of Ed Leadership in Special Education, Master's of Education in Special Education and completed the Ed Leadership Certificate, both from George Mason University. Welcome. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do you have any other comments, Dr. Kizner?
Yes, I do.
Free comments?
No, I'm taking my full two seconds. All right. So I have shared this with the administration, with the superintendent advisory committee, with the parent advisory committee. So a lot of times, we talk about, well, how are we going to, like, show progress? So I believe, as you know, that every day we can be better than the day before. So continuous improvement is the way I like us to think about things. Even when we think we're there, we are never going to get there. We always want to thrive to be better. And when you look at best practices that separate high-performing, high-achieving schools versus low-performing, low-achieving schools, it's those schools that are doing the following that you have in front of you, that are doing it intentionally, doing it well, when we invest in resources, professional development, and so on. So again, school and home community partnerships is critical. Why? Because we know more parents are involved in their child's education, academic behavior, and attendance. And Mrs. Young is completely correct that the best indicator for a child's going to drop out will be students that miss school. Okay, your middle school is the best predictor for 12th and 11th grade dropout. We've talked a lot about it, social, emotional, and physical support of our children. We teach the whole child. We spent a lot today talking about the SOLs, but it's a lot more than the SOLs. It's about the needs of our children. And yes, we are a school system, and we serve in a role of a parent, and I will never be shy of saying that in local parentis. And we have a responsibility when a child is struggling emotionally, socially, to help them get the supports they need, working with their families, working with the community. And we saw a great example today, I saw a great example today, where parents of a child came to our, my office with the principal and two community agencies, two members of community agencies, to talk of how we could best meet the needs of their child. That's the collaboration that I look forward to continue. Tier instructional support, every child. We start where he or she is, and we look for improvement. And the beauty of education is that every child's different, and we work to make sure every child gets the specialized instruction they need. The foundation of everything we have to do is equity and high expectations. No wavering of that belief. Every child that enters our school system, our only belief should be that they could be the next recipient of Nobel Prizes. College and career readiness, that's our culminating event. June 15th, we're going to have hundreds and hundreds of children walking across the stage, getting their diploma. Many of those kids have been with us for 13 years, maybe 13-plus years. And what we should be looking at, those kids that enter our kindergarten in August, they're the class of 2032. Think about that. The class of 2032. And we need to be preparing now to make sure when they walk across the stage, they will be prepared for the next great opportunities or challenges that, in front of them. Like students, we also need to see our adults have different needs, and professional learning has to be targeted and meet the needs of our staff for where they believe how they could benefit. So we're going to talk a lot more about this, but I just want to make sure, because this, I think, is in context to the foundation discussions that we already have and we will have, not only today, but moving forward. Let's hold on down one second.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Mr. McCosker, did we hear you moving around?
Yes, I'm still here. I can hear about 60% of what's going on. So when you get into the information items, please just check with me.
All right, well, we're on action items right now. The new action item 10.01 is approval of continued participation with the VA Corp Hybrid Disability Program. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by Mrs. Hazard and second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Just discussion. Last meeting, we talked about this, about potentially pursuing this as a legislative item. We did not receive the information we needed regarding that, but I did share it with Dr. Kizner and requested that. I would like some, and I know we will be doing additional committees in the future, but I do think this is a particular issue about the hybrid program of bringing forth in working with our VE, with the SEA and other organizations about, they are really worried about why teachers aren't coming here, is the retirement program. And I think that's something we need to bring forward. So I just wanted to bring that forward, that I really heard what was being said that night, and I thought it was very good information. So I'd really like to continue to work on that, although we won't be bringing it to Virginia School Board Association because the time deadline will pass. I just would like that not to fall off of whoever is on the legislative committee because I do think that's an important issue. That was all.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Anything else? All in favor of the motion to approve 10.01? Please say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to 10.02, approval of permanent storm drainage and traffic control easements and a temporary construction easement in support of the county's and Virginia Department of Transportation Route One and Courthouse Road intersection improvement project. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Decatur. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion? No, this is part two. Part one was approved earlier, and part two is ready tonight. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 10.03, approval of proposed revisions to policy 2401 and Regulation 2401-R, Code of Student Conduct. Do we have a motion? We have to have a motion for discussion. Okay, we're going to pass this one? We can bring it back next time?
I make a motion that we approve 10.03, proposed revision to policy.
All right, motion by Dr. Chase, second by Mr. McCosker. Any discussion?
Ms. Egan?
This is the, this is that restorative practices issue?
Yes.
So I didn't see in here any explanation or getting into details about any of this. So what exactly are we approving here?
Okay, let me just, let me just, again, try my best at this. We currently have many restorative practice procedures taking place in our schools. Our Teacher of the Year, if you go into his classroom, he does a restorative circle. Kids talk about their day. They talk about how they handle things like bullying, peer pressure. That's part of the restorative practices. What the restorative practice allows, so again, using real issues. Last week, I had another mother and father in the office talking about their child's problem with another student. And in that conversation, the parent raised, it would have been really good that if we could have gotten both of these children together to discuss how their behaviors are impacting their child. Restorative practice is not, it's just like how we have counseling on that same page. We don't spell out what counseling theories, methodologies. So restoring practice gives another opportunity for students on the social, emotional part to learn about ways of handling conflict, ways of hearing peer pressure, ways of hearing stress, ways of understanding. Yes, there are times when a parent, I mean, when a student does something to another student, does something to a staff member, does something to a school, like threatens to blow up the school, that he or she needs to better, needs to understand how her behavior or his behavior impacted everybody in that school. So it's not a replacement of the discipline procedures. It's a compliment to say we are a school system, and what we want to do is help this child better understand how to avoid doing what they did before. Going to a greater point, which I know at least some of you might share, to make it effective, you do involve the families. You do involve the parents. Because I do agree with a comment that might be said, there might be a child who doesn't want to do this. There's no force in this thing. There might be a child who's saying, or a parent saying, no, my kid is, enough with that kid, okay? I don't want anything to do with it, okay? Fine, just like counseling. You don't counsel a kid that doesn't want to be in counseling. I already indicated that in, late July, when we have more training, because we're not prepared division-wide to go down this pathway. There's a lot of training, there's a, and I did do research. You could check with anyone you want. School systems all around us have this in place. And we can't continue to say to ourselves, because we scheduled, I think in July, Missy's trying to get two hours for us to talk about discipline. If we think that our current procedures is just going to improve our discipline, we're kidding ourselves. We have to implement something to help children to understand what they're doing is wrong, if they're doing something wrong. And we have to help our staff, truthfully, that's a whole another conversation. I think the comment that you heard today says that it's not just working with the children, it's also working with our staff, but I don't want to get into that right now. And then help that student see alternatives and also give the opportunity, when there is conflict, when there is a student that's been violated, that there's a chance for that student and the other student to get together under trained staff to go through a restorative practice.
Okay, so let me just finish my thought on this. So the last time we had a conversation about this, I indicated that these things should be happening anyhow without having to put it in black and white. That's number one. Number two, I'm for this. Don't think I'm against it. I'm for it. But nowhere in here did I read anything about the current, you know, policy for consequences is going away. The problem I have with this is that there's no specificity in this. There's no plan of action, what's going to be done, what's not going to be done. This just says, we're going to get a group of people together, we're going to change this, do that, do that, everything's going to be hunky-dory. I need to see something concrete, some solid, this isn't a plan, it's just, let's put something out on paper, and we'll deal with the specifics later on. And that's what I have a problem with.
And I respect that. Let me just maybe just, so I hope Ms. Healy doesn't mind me using her as an example. This is a positive example. But the question was asked, well, can't you do this without this being in here? And the answer is yes, because we're already doing it. Some teachers are trained. We, Mr., I don't think he's still here, but Mr. Lewis went to a training. We have our director at the Phoenix Center. She's going for training this summer. So we have elements of this already in place. But I would just ask you, if you look under corrective action disciplinary consequences on that page, we have a lot of things that are listed that doesn't spell out what we're doing, community service, again, counseling, reprimand. So I put it in there to let the public know that there are other, there's other strategies we could use to help our schools be safe and orderly. And that was my only intent.
Okay, then perhaps we could throw something in there that says that we're not doing away with the rest of our system? Because I think that seems to be the bone of contention with some of the feedback that I've been getting on this, and my parents spoke to it tonight.
There's no red lines of taking anything else away.
Well, maybe it needs to be reiterated somewhere, and there needs to be like an amendment to it that says, you know, here and after, this is, the remaining portions of this policy will remain in effect, or something along those lines. Because what the feedback I'm getting is, that's not the way they're seeing it.
Ms. Decatur wanted to.
Hey, hey, do you guys hear me?
Dwayne? Oh, okay. Ms. Decatur is.
Let me just jump in there.
Letting you jump in, but you're next.
I can't see you guys, so. Hey, listen, I think the restorative practices is a great idea, okay? I think, you know, the other, the other word for this could be a conflict resolution. I think that Dr. Kizner's right, that I think it's happening every day. I do agree with Ms. Egan, though, we probably need to maybe just write a few, a sentence or two more on restorative practices and, you know, actually bring restorative practices down as a bulleted item. And then kind of extend a little bit on it, just to tell the folks that, you know, hey, you know, in our whole repertoire of stuff that we can, corrective actions and disciplinary consequences that the child can get, this is one of them that we, we may even want to put it up front. And this is one of them that we may want to do. We want to officially have like a little outline of, hey, this is a conflict resolution process, and we're going to ask the parents to. resolution process, and we're going to ask the parents permission if they want to sit down with the victim and the subject, or however you want to identify the kids, and sit down and talk about it, because these kids, you know, what we don't want to do, and I agree with Dr. Kizner, is we don't want to go right to the discipline, where the child does something wrong, and then automatically, they look in the policy and they see counseling, reprimand, admonishment, bada bing bada boom bada bing. I think that the restorative practices, I think it's a good thing. And I think some, like I said, I think some of our folks are doing it, and some are not. They're going right to the, right to the reg, and then, and then just, you know, writing up the issue, and then disciplining the child. So, so I think it's a wonderful idea. I think we just need to maybe, maybe pull it out of that corrective action sentence, and put it down as a bulleted item, and kind of say a little, a little blurb about it, and its importance. And, you know, and I think this is, this is all about care of the children. You know, this is all about, hey, this is, we're doing this to make sure that, you know, we do have a heart, we do want to listen, we do want to fix a problem, and fully knowing that some problems just can't be fixed by restorative practices, right? And, and so, that's my, that's my thoughts on it.
Then Ms. Decatur.
You know what, actually, he kind of just summed up everything I want to say. So we're, this is going to be a long meeting. I'm not going to reiterate everything. I wholeheartedly agree. I just, I would support it the way it is, and I'll support it, you know, with you guys revising it, so that you're more comfortable with it. I would just say that, you know, a lot, we're already doing a lot of, restorative justice is critically important for social-emotional development, and many, many of these practices are already being used to help children understand some of their behaviors, how their behaviors influence others, and so on and so forth. So, you know, I would just say, I'm not totally sure that we needed to have it in a policy, but I think it's a great thing to add to the policy. So I'm, I'm all for it, and however you guys are comfortable with it, I'll support.
Ms. Young.
So, yes, I am for it, but I don't think we're going far enough. I just think that having a toolkit, and this is just another piece in the toolkit, restorative practices, it's not listed anywhere, what needs to be done, but more so, it's about training these teachers to understand the behavior of every single child, not just some. We have children with behavioral problems that people think they're just acting out, or they're bad, and they're not. They're just, maybe they didn't eat that morning. But the way how we discipline some kids and not all, I just think that students should have the right to expect an educational environment in which they could strive to achieve their intellectual potentials. And so, I want students to be in school regularly. I just believe that, I don't want to mention the word, but I will, implicit bias exists, and that is something that we need to address. We need to just address it head-on. And, you know, my four children was raised through Stafford County Schools. My oldest, I'm not going to tell you how old he is, but anyway, I had to go to school many times, you know? I had to go to school, and, you know, you get to know the teachers, they get to know you, but some parents don't get to be in school, because they're working, trying to provide food on the table for their kids. So, I will, yes, support this, but as I said, somewhere, this is a good start. We need to write what they are, and then we need to have training for the teachers and principals. And we need to keep an eye on how the kids are being sent out of school, and the referrals and the numbers. And Dr. Kizner, you know, you and I, we've been talking about it, you've been giving me numbers, and I'm looking at them closely, and they're on notice that it's being looked at. So, thank you. Thank you, Duane McCosker.
Ms. Hazard, do you have any comments?
Um, my comments, again, focus on, this board is the policy board for us to really understand what this is. And I have heard different ones. I've gotten, you know, an article from, from Dr. Kizner. I, what my concerns are, is it comes down to, it talks about, everybody has to be trained in this. How many people do we have trained in this? How much are we offering based on this policy? Is this going to be in one school, or is this going to be in every school? I am willing, probably, maybe, to support this in the future, but I have to say, I would like to know more about it. I think there needs to be more definition. My real concern is, is what additional things are we placing? I hear that we're talking that it's teachers that are implementing it, that are administrators and counselors. I'm not really clear on who is administering this, when the students are pulled out to engage in these activities. Obviously, the potential or alleged perpetrator is now still in school, but now the victim will be pulled out of class to do that. I just, it's the implementation. I may be able to get more behind this, but at this point, I am just not comfortable there, because I do see that there is, and I'm not saying that I would not, you know, allocate training, those kinds of things, but it does seem to keep coming down to these people, somebody has been trained. And does, do these meetings now include five to 10 people? And I'm not saying that's not the right people, but I do think we have to really understand that impact and how it will impact our personnel. So at this point, I'm not there. I could get there, but I just need more understanding of how it would be implemented.
I obviously have done.
Dr. Chase?
I've obviously done an ineffective job of explaining.
Dr. Kizner, can we hear from everybody, and then you can address all the comments, all at once?
Well, fresh, please. She, you used the word meetings? And these are practices. So I just want to make sure, we, it's understood that it's not, it's, I think people have a, we're going to take two kids, we're pulling out of class, and I was trying to share some examples, where we have teachers that are doing practices, and this is really what the word says. It doesn't say restorative meetings. I just want to make sure that's understood. Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm, I, there's going to be other comments, so I say, we'll give you an opportunity to respond to all the comments, but Dr. Chase's turn, and then mine.
Sure. So, for me, and we know how I like the definitions of words, that for me, I go back to discipline, it means teaching, right? And, and we think about disciples, and, and being students, and being teachers. And so for me, I really want us to have practices that, when a child receives discipline, that there will be some learning. And what I've seen firsthand with, with children, you know, starting way back in elementary school, we have little pegs that are red, yellow, and green, and you want your peg to stay green. And then if you don't, you know, if you talk too much, you get moved to yellow. And then if you keep talking, you get to red. And then a note comes home to your mother. Well, it's fine if that happens once or twice, but if a teacher's doing that every single day, every single day, that's not disciplined, that's not working. And so for me, the issue is, we have, over 20% of our teachers have less than three years of experience. They don't have the tools that they need. And we, as a school division, need to make sure that our teachers are learning other tools and other strategies, and that they know when they're using punishment, when they're using reinforcement, what they're doing. And so, I'm supportive of making things work better in Stafford County Public Schools.
Thank you. And I'm glad you used my example, because my question to Dr. Kizner was, if we're already doing this, why are we making a change? And I know you want to make a point, but my response to that is, if we on the board, and I'm speaking for myself, but I've, I've talked to several people, and I'm not sure that there is a definition that everyone sees this as being. So, I'm not hearing objections to it, but if we're going to add two words to our policy, and, and expect that to be adhered to, then we should define that. And I, you know, I'm hearing a variety of definitions. Is it possible to define what we mean by this? Now, I mean, somebody's going to have to write it up, but I think that would do two things. One, it would help in the teaching level, because people would know, you know, where, where they're going and what we're looking for, but it would also help our community. I know I've mentioned to you, I personally have concerns that we're talking about pulling in students without parental notice or consent. And I, and I think you mentioned, we can do that, but I don't see that in this policy. And I, I understand you said, we don't have to do that, but for me, it's, it's necessary. I don't want a student being pulled in for some, I'll call it an intervention, whatever, restorative practice, without the parents knowing about it, you know, and, and giving consent to it. At least from, from my view, as a community member, that's, that's important. We are not the parents. We do certainly want to maintain discipline, you know, in the school. Excuse me?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Sorry, I'm trying not to interrupt, but I, I just, it's hard to hear.
Oh, okay. Well, you've heard, you've heard me.
But I, but I have, but I have been listening to the board members, and it seems like everyone's a little uncomfortable with just the words, restorative practices. Could I, could I make a friendly suggestion that the board, Dr. Kizner, if he, if he wants to, can take restorative practices and bring it into its own, maybe its own paragraph, and state something like, restorative practices, and then under that say, this is a, this is, this is a method of bringing, bringing resolution to, you know, issues that can be handled at school, you know, without law enforcement, you know? Kind of like, kind of frame the issue a little bit, and, and put a little bit of meat onto that, which is probably a great idea by some really smart person, you know, restorative practices. And, you know, like I said, it could be, in the old days, it might've been conflict resolution, it might've been a lot of things. So, would that be, would that be, would that be a good idea, you think? Do you think, Dr. Kizner, could you go for that, to bring it back with a little bit of meat on it?
I, I work for the board. I, what I did was to be transparent and honest to this community, okay? We already have this in place. We are sending people, we are investing in people's training. We all acknowledge that we have discipline issues, we have repeat offenders, and this is not only a practice that's used in schools, it's a practice used nationwide in many different organizations. And you saw the article I sent you about Spotsylvania Schools in partnership with their Community Services Board, Prince William, I mean, I could just go on and on. So I'm a little surprised on the reaction, because when I look at the other bullets there, I could easily question, what does this really mean? So I will do whatever the board chooses to do, wants me to do, because I work for you, and, but I put it in there, so we, honestly, how I misinterpret it, would be seen as we are being somewhat proactive in trying to address children that are struggling. So that's, but again, I could bring it back with a paragraph, a couple sentences, whatever the board would prefer.
And Dr. Kizner, please don't, for, at least for me, speaking for myself, please don't, I'm not taking this, you have full, you have my full credibility. And, and so, you know, I, I just think that, I think it sounds like the other board members are, you know, a little bit concerned now, but if we want to move it to action, I am, I am willing to move to action.
We're not uncomfortable. I think you, 60% of your hearing, you're not hearing right. So, we would like to call it the question right now.
All right. All in favor of the motion to approve, proposed revisions to policy 2401 and Regulation 2401-R to the Student Code of Conduct, as they're stated in the agenda item, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Mr. McCosker?
Aye.
And Ms. Young?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, 10.04, Approval of Proposed Revisions to Policy 2403, Student Suspensions and Expulsions.
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCosker, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. What difference does the, the word change make in the big scheme of things here, from changing request to appeal? What does that do? What's the benefit of doing that?
Dr. Kizner?
What page are you on? Okay, so it says, it says examination of the record of a student's behavior, and such other evidence as may be appropriate or determined by the superintendent or designee. Such written request, and now it says such written appeal.
Yeah.
Must be filed with the superintendent.
It benefits parents, in that they know what an appeal is. I think it's simply to clarify for parents that there is an appeal process. The request is, we've had it for 20 years. I don't think it's caused a problem. But appeal is much more straightforward in parent terminology. So, there's no real difference. It's just a different word for the same thing.
And do we have somewhere listed what the appeal process is?
You're looking at it in that regulation. That's what the appeal process is.
No, I mean, what the, what, the definition of appeal, to say that, what exactly this appeal is.
Well, they would.
Nothing else has changed in here, other than those words?
They changed the amount of time.
And that one, too. But I still don't see how that, anyway, I'm assuming nothing else has changed, the, the process, the letter that goes home that says that you may appeal.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I, I wanted to make sure that we're being consistent with the term, the terms that we're using, so.
Right, and you can appeal your six days and up to the board.
So maybe it was that this was not consistent. It says request.
Right. Okay, so I just want to make sure nothing else has changed. I just wanted to be consistent between this document and what the letters were sending home from the principals.
Please note for the record.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. So, do the victims have to suffer while parents appeal immediately? If they don't appeal immediately, which keeps the accuser in school?
Well, maybe they'll do the restorative practices and.
Don't be funny.
I'm not. I'm, they can do it without anybody consenting to it anytime, right?
So.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Okay. No consent required. Oh, please, Mr. McCosker.
Oh, so, it says, I'm just thinking, I'm sorry to think about this early, but upon written appeal of the parent guardian or student, adult student, the superintendent's shell, hearing review. What happens if, what happens if, you know, we're talking about diversity, we're talking about folks that are English as a second language, what happens if they can't write a letter? What happens to those people? What's their due process?
So we do have translators available in the school. We've not found somebody that has come up with a language yet that we're not able to converse with them. We will find somebody.
Okay, so if they call up and say, hey, I want to appeal, but I really can't, don't understand how to write this letter, we're helping out in those cases.
So we're very informal in terms of what's required for an appeal. The parent simply has to say, I appeal, and that is going to register them in the process, so that it will be heard at the next stage, as to whether they'll be disciplined in some fashion or not.
Okay.
Okay. Who has more questions? Ms. Hazard?
Well, to be honest, you asked the one that I have. Does restorative justice practices stay this procedure?
I don't know. You'll have to ask Dr. Kizner.
What was the question?
Does a restorative practice, whatever it's called, I know it's not a meeting, whatever it is, stay this process of these, of these timelines?
If a principal chooses to suspend, then the appeal process, the notification to the parents, is given. Just like if a principal chooses to send a child for counseling, the appeal would not begin, because there would be no suspension. begin, because there would be no suspension. So, the appeal is when you received a suspension, your child received a suspension. So, again, I don't know if that answers your question.
Perhaps, Ms. Hazard, are you asking if there is a restorative practice, there will be no suspension or nothing to appeal? Is that...
I'm just trying to make sure I understand it, because obviously I don't, so, okay. I would also at least say, I know you have, by changing the thing up to 10 days in the case of unusual, I know extenuating is a legal word, I really like that word just as much, because I think unusual circumstances can be unusual. Extenuating, to me, is death in the fa... I mean, I just feel like, I hope it is the exception and not the rule, that we are, we provide some grace, but I am all about, you know, shrinking it, but I also don't want to slam a door for a family that may be in crisis. And we have certainly had some of those.
So, are you suggesting we change unusual?
It could be and, extenuating and unusual, you can put both. I just feel like that really unusual circumstances, to me, is...
Extenuating, I think it should be replaced with unusual. Yeah, I think so too. You don't need both. I think extenuating circumstances is the best one. I have a comment, though, and I brought this up, sorry, Madam Chair. Free for all, right now? Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. So, I know Mr. McCosker talked about disadvantaged kids, I'm in the parents' English, but I'm more concerned that there are parents that don't even know that there is an appeal process, and, you know, we're talking here, we're talking to a small group of people that know what to do and get a lawyer and, you know, call Mr. Nelson up and, you know, most parents don't know. How do we get that information to them? And I'm not talking about restorative practice, I'm not talking about a bully, a bad kid, I'm talking about parents that really need to appeal because their kid, there's a parent that just came today, this prime example, that kid that needs help, and the parents don't know where to go or what's going on, because parents never show up in school. So, you know, there's no appeal. So, we just need to do some work on that, like, what is, is there a process to get more people in the...
Yeah, well, let me, your point is well taken, I would maybe even extend that to kids who are failing, kids who don't get courses, how do, the question is, parents who may not have the time, language, resources to better understand their rights in the system, how do we reach out to them? And so, the answer is, a lot of people have to take on that responsibility, and I believe it really starts in many ways and maybe even ends to a great degree with the building principals, that he or she has to see it as their obligation, that just by sending a letter home, I think a follow-up phone call, and especially if it's someone who speaks English as a second language, somebody who speaks that language, says, "Did you receive the letter that we sent you? Do you understand? Do you have any questions? And do you underst..." I don't know if it's next board meeting, but the board meeting afterwards, through our title funds, we are going to have a position that's a family outreach engagement position. I think that person's going to play a, that's part of the circle, is going to play a central role, and it's just one person, this is a large school system, one person is a start, but we, you know, we have people at each building, against principal school counselors and so on. But I would just extend it that there's a lot of children that I, in my career, who really struggled academically, and I wish those parents, many times, would question what we were doing. And then there are, and I'm not, every parent should, has an entitlement, in my opinion, to question what we're doing, but I often would hear from the parents whose child maybe got a B instead of an A, and I would like to hear from the parent who got a D or an F and say, you know, something's going on, going wrong here. So, it's beyond just this issue, that what you're treating as...
So, anecdotally, I would say that the principals, the assistant principals do reach out, they do call parents. I can't say 100% they do it, but in the vast majority of circumstances, they communicate with the parent, it's not just a letter that goes home, they call. And sometimes they'll find a teacher that speaks Spanish or speaks, I don't even know if they teach French anymore.
Yeah.
But if somebody speaks French, maybe they'll call them.
Yeah, something's not working.
Well, I don't think that's correct. I think it is working by and large, communicating with the parents. The schools make a great effort to communicate with the parents.
If it was working, we won't have so many kids in our town.
Well, I must say, I was speaking with someone who complimented the staff at North Stafford High School. He told me, he said, "If my child is late for a class, I get a text." And I am so grateful for that, because those teachers are on track, you know, with not just his child, but every student. So, I think that there is a lot being done that is not recognized, it's just a part of the routine of our teachers and what they're trying to do to keep in touch with the families. So, while there may be some that fall through, I would hope that those are the minority and not the majority of the cases where we have, you know, communication issues.
I do think it goes back to what we're all saying, we could always improve, and that's how we have to look at it.
All right, any other comments, questions about this item? I heard a request that unusual be changed to extenuating, to modify circumstances. Is there a desire on the part of the motion maker and the second?
I'm fine with that change.
Wake up. Oh, Mr. McCosker, are you with us? Well, he did. Wake him up. All right, we can't make a change unless the first and the second agree to it. Or we can just leave it as unusual. I don't think it's really going to make that much difference. Tick tock.
I can hear a little bit, yeah. That's perfectly all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. All right, no more discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve with the change in the adjective, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we have a rather lengthy information items. Does anyone want to take a seven-minute break until 9:15 and then come back?
No.
Or you want to just keep, I mean, 9:15?
Take a five...
Yeah, I mean, we'll start again at 9:15, it's seven minutes.
Okay.
I mean, we can say five, but it might be a little ambitious if we're all heading to the restroom at the same time. All right, we'll be back and start with 11:01.
Mr. McCosker, we're going to take a short break, be right back.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
I was telling Dr. Kizner that Mountain View defeated Harrisonburg in boys soccer.
Ooh, oh, I wish I could have seen that. Was that, are they in their division?
I think they now go to the semifinals.
Hey, Missy, can you move that microphone closer to Ms. Healy?
I don't think it will, it won't extend that far, I'm sorry.
I mean, is that that new angle? Oh, you know, it probably stinks.
They have one in every...
All right.
Oh, yeah, but let's add to it. It worked so good last year that now we're going to add on to it.
How many suggestions were there? Did we see them all, or? Right, I don't like it at all.
What are we talking about?
We don't really get it, they're going to do it anyways, if they land acquisition committee.
Okay.
It's just step one of their phase-out the school board program.
We never played Harrisonburg before.
Well, it's because they're now in the regional...
Oh, really?
Yes, it was.
They've gotten a goal in the final five minutes.
So, Jamie, so, you do know Anwar?
Yeah, I have to look him up, okay.
He's married now, Anwar Allen.
A-N-W-A-R.
Are you Sarah Salen?
What's his last name?
Allen, A-L-L-E-N. He played soccer.
So, it sounds so familiar, but I want to connect to the face with the name, because I...
He has a cooking business here.
Yes, there's...
Chairman Healy.
Friends. Yes, I remember him.
That's Anwar, that's my baby, my oldest baby.
So, I only went there my senior year, so I didn't know a lot of people, I'm just...
But he's friendly.
Yeah, yeah.
This has, last time, a request about the agenda as we start.
Yes.
I would like to...
I am, I am, thank you.
I would like to request, we have Ms. Massey here from Head Start, I know that she has a very, very long journey home and will be with our wonderful students tomorrow morning, and I was wondering if we would be open to moving, I'm sorry, information items which both have been requested to move to action this night, this evening, 11:04 and 11:05 to the top of our agenda, so that we may act on that and allow her to go home. All right, so, we're going to start with 11:04, which I guess is now revised 11:01, approval of a budget revision in the 2018-2019 Head Start grant funds in the amount of $30,490 to purchase a replacement 2020 Ford Explorer vehicle. Ms. Hazard, do you have anything you want to say about that?
I would not, I think that the explanation sets it out, noting that no monies from the operating budget will be used for this, and it is a budget transfer, and clearly with the amount of additional driving that will be required for our staff in there, I believe the sooner we expedite this, because it must be also approved by the regional Head Start office after we make that, which would be the reason to, I would hope the board would consider moving it to action.
Okay, is that a motion?
It is a motion to move...
Motion to move to action, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Ms. Egan. Ms. Young, did you have a discussion?
Is it clean fuel? You don't have to answer, I'm just really kidding.
Okay, thank you. All right, any discussion on the motion to move it to action? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion for approval, Ms. Hazard?
Motion to approve the purchase of a replacement 2020 Ford Explorer vehicle for our Head Start program.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan, you're going to have to speed it up if you want to get in there, Ms. Young.
Any discussion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, that brings us to the former 11:05, now 11:02, approval of Stafford Head Start supplemental amendment grant application for one-time funding of $33,388.80 for perimeter fencing of the North Star Early Childhood Education Center play area for safety and security purposes. future, but that doesn't impact this one. Um, we would have, um, quotes for these.
Okay.
So, it's a minimum of, um, three written quotes.
Yeah, I know, but then, so, we got one and just, we just accept that price from that person?
No, so we would, we would go out and get at least three different vendors to, um, give us quotes, and then we would take the lowest quote from them.
Okay, yeah, all right. I'll, you know what, I'll email.
Yeah.
A, a question that may be being asked is, how do you get on that vendor list?
Oh, um, no.
That wasn't the question.
It's okay.
All right. All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, the new eleven point oh three, formerly eleven point oh one, appointment of school board members to serve on the board's standing committees. Uh, there's no action on this this evening, but at the next meeting, we need to appoint, uh, to the Finance and Budget Committee, the Governance Committee, and the Legislative Committee. So, uh, if you're interested in returning or going on, uh, be ready to speak up at the next meeting. Okay? All right, um, eleven point oh four, endorsement of the formation of a new school site selection and acquisition team for the school division and county. Uh, Dr. Kizner, do you want to give us the background on this? This is a supervisor request.
Right, so, um, the Board of Supervisors, uh, working with their staff, put together a steering committee to help select the next, uh, site for the high school. Um, originally, we only had one member assigned to that committee, and I requested that we have at least three, and so we have three. And what they're really asking you for is just to endorse it. I don't know, I don't know if you want to do it through formal action or at least be fully aware of it.
I'm sorry, are we endorsing the committee, not endorsing that they picked the site?
No, no, it's very clear that you guys will make the recommendation. It's your legal responsibility to make the recommendation.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Can, can I ask an additional question?
Key word, recommendation.
Can we skip eleven point oh three?
Right.
We moved it. We moved them around.
I'll take that as yes. Um, I looked through here, and maybe I missed it. Again, there's no, I don't see anything that addresses, um, recommendations and who is it brought to, and are they, are they bringing several options? Is there, who, who on the school board and on the Board of Supervisors is going to serve as the, as, as a committee, if there's even one suggested to hear these recommendations? Uh, there's, I don't see anything that talks about the process. Well, there's a charge, there's no process, there's no timeline, there's no, there's nothing.
No, there is a timeline.
Where's the timeline?
It says two years, which is outrageous, but.
Right, but, all right, so, there, there should be, two years is nothing. That's just, I'm going to throw a date out there, and that, that's the end of it. You know, how long do they have to go out and look for stuff? How lo, how long are they given to do, you know, um, land utilization studies? And, and, I mean, there's all this process. There, there's no way that's going, you're going to do it in two years, but be a little bit more specific with all of the different things that are, I mean, think about when you bought your house. You had to go, you had to jump through all these hoops, funding and all. There's no timeline for any of this. So, did anybody really think, think this through, or is it, they just, again, we're throwing some words down on a piece of paper and we're supposed to just improve it?
I, I attended their Fab meeting because I have grave concerns about this. However, I will say the endorsement of a process to acquire land, I am entirely behind.
Sure.
That we think that it will take eight years, that means we will have no new schools for eight years, which, if you do the math, if we grow at two percent and we start at ninety percent, fi, and I'm not the math major, five times two gets to ten, that's five years, we're at a hundred percent. My only con, I am, I am, I want to endorse this, this creation. However, eight years is way too long, and my only other concern, and this is more for Dr. Kizner, I am impressed with the people who sit on this committee. My concern is, these are all the high-level people. How much of a, um, priority can that be because of their other, um, priorities? I mean, these are, you know, Depac, Deputy Director of Public Works. I love that they are on there, but my concern is, do we have what I would always consider the worker bees, from, from my husband's perspective, the chief, to get some of that, that work done? I, that's the only reason my, I have my concern about the timing. I like the people that are on there, but I'm concerned that we may not have, in Navy speak, the chief to kind of move the process. So, again, I am endorsing this, but remember, right now, today, high school is eighty-nine point one percent capacity. Middle school is eighty-four point eight, predicted to be eighty-eight point seven next year. Elementary is eighty-six point six, predicted to be eighty-seven point seven percent. We have to get this process going. So, I am going to say I endorse it, but our, the timeline, to me, is not adequate.
I'd like to hear from the CIP Advisory Committee before we take any action on this.
I don't want them to wait.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. McOscar.
How are you tonight? Anyway, um, thank you for recognizing.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, so, you know, first of all, I'd like to say this, this item, um, you know, I commend the supervisors for getting something on paper, okay? You know, we, we've known that, we, we need to get a site for high school number six, and we've been talking about it for years as well. And, hey, listen, they got something on paper. So, um, I am a pessimist, though, uh, so, there's a lot of things that I can be pessimistic about, but they did get something on paper, and so now we have, we can get a good look at it, and I, and I like, and I like some of the stuff on here, and there's some of the stuff we need, we need to, we need to work with, like some of the board members have said. But, um, hey, listen, at least they're moving out, um, and they're recognizing that we need it, we need a high school, and, um, so, yeah, let's, let's take a good look at it, let's, let's see if we can't, you know, formulate some, some comments to send back to them, and we'll move out from there.
All right, well, this is for information this evening, that we've been asked for an endorsement, so this will be coming back, uh, at the next meeting. If anyone has any, uh, thoughts they want to share, please send them to, uh, Eric Clark, and she can share them with all the board members. That brings us to eleven point oh five. Approval of the authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent form for submission to the Virginia Department of Education. And that will be it back for us on the next, uh, agenda, if there's no, um, burning desire to discuss that. Um, I think it's pretty standard, it says that, um, Mrs. Cale and Mr. Fulmer will have authority to sign for the superintendent in his absence. We can put that on consent agenda and cut the action items by one. Next item for information is eleven point oh six. Approval of the renewal of annual licensing from CDW dash G for the Micro Focus Enterprise Server Operating System, an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars using budgeted FY nineteen operating funds.
I have a quick question over there.
Okay, Ms. Young.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm in technology, but, um, I worked with CDW a lot. Did they, are they now, um, selling servers? And I know they always sold de, like, what are they doing right now? Because I know they're expensive.
CDWG actually sells just about every kind of IT.
I know.
Uh, accessory or service or component that you would want. Um, they're one of a very few number of vendors that we can, that resell this particular software.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, as, um, Chris indicated earlier, you know, we usually will review, uh, quotes from a variety of vendors, and then, in this particular case, um, we're going off of a, uh, an existing, uh, Virginia IT state contract.
Okay.
Any questions? Send to the clerk, and she will send them forward.
No, I'm, I'm good.
All right, anybody else know? Eleven point oh seven. Approval of the renewal of annual licenses, again, from CDWG, stick around, for Microsoft Office and Windows ten, for Windows desktop slash laptops and all Mac laptops, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand dollars using budgeted FY nineteen operating funds.
Same answer for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, no other questions? Thank you very much. Eleven point oh eight. Approval of proposed revisions to policy forty-one oh seven. Nondiscrimination, equal employment opportunity, anti-retaliation. Now, our work session was cut drastically short. Uh, it was, what would you say, about five minutes? So, eight minutes, right, and for two of us that had to use the restroom, it was a little shorter than the eight minutes. Um, so, why don't we, um, we can continue that discussion now, or we can schedule another work session to start at the beginning without anything else in front of it.
I think we need a work session. At, at this point, we need a work session. We need, we, we're not going to rush this.
Ms. Decatur, you and Dr. Chase are the ones that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So, yeah, no, no, I, I, I respect all of it. Um, I, I think we could use a work session, just because what I don't want to see is, uh, you know, like, like tonight, we've had several things come, and there's like minor little tweaks or wordings, and the way that our process works is this, this comes for information, and at our next meeting, it's going to come back for action. So, I'd really, um, and I'd, I, well, let me finish one sentence before I acknowledge another thing. So, I would really hate to see this come back for action on the next thing, and we have some minor tweaks and wording, and, and then, so we're not making any decisions at the next meeting, and, and it gets put off. And, and so the other thing I'll say, and I, and I talked to somebody, um, else about this today, because I recognize that the timing where this has been put, and I, and I, it bothers me that it is apparent that we are trying to sneak something in. You know, okay, so first we had redistricting, and then we had the budget, and I'm sorry that people take vacations, and it's a busy time of year, but life goes on, and we still have work to do, and I don't mean to be gruff by saying that, but that's just the reality of it. We're going to work throughout the summer while everyone else is taking their vacations, and things are still going to need to happen and roll, because we're going to start a new work, uh, or a, a new school year, and some things need to be done before that school year starts, because I would really, really hate to see another incident happen with a student and staff who are still not prepared and have had no training after probably a full year now, um, and are still not prepared to handle, um, incidents at school with any of our children. So, the time is now, uh, what, the time is now and in the upcoming months that Dr. Kizner is going to be working with our teachers through summits and in services, and I've been asking for a year for just some training and support for our teachers is, is just incredibly important to me. So, um, so that's that. So, so I do apologize. I will take the heat for that, appearing that it's, we're sneaking it in. It's not my intention to sneak anything in. I've just been asking for it for a lot of months now, and we did have some other really important things going on, and we actually didn't really want to sneak it in when we're doing very important things like redistricting and budgeting and stuff, because then it would look like we're kind of trying to sneak it in when we're talking about other big things. So, here we are, it's now, my apologies that it, um, it appears to be, uh, snuck in there, but that was not the intention. Um, I could say some other things, but it's been a very long night, and I would like to have a work session, and I'll, I'll talk more about it then.
Okay. Any other discussion? General agreement on a work session? Um, Ms. Hazard?
Um, I was just going to make a, a couple of comments, and, uh, just in, in preparation for the, uh, work session, these were some of the concepts, and I'm talking concepts tonight. Um, I understand how the policy is written, but, um, Ms. Young sort of highlighted this in the work session about the intermingling of the student portion and the employee portion. I, and I'm not saying that they are treated differently, but I do think some of the, um, concepts in the employment, um, and, and like I said, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm talking conceptually, I, I'm just wrestling with whether we want to say it all in one place. I'm not, um, so, I'm just bringing that to the board. I'm, as I read it, I, 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 I want it to be very clear for people to know where to go and how to handle that. Um, so, I'm just saying, and I see in here, sort of, we, sort of take out affirmative action. I, I just make, I want to make sure we aren't going back. Um, so, I just want to bring that concept generally to the board. I'm still chewing on it myself and would like to hear maybe, um, more about that. Um, and I guess my second conceptual concept, concept is, um, sort of, um, making sure that the board retains the implementation of this, um, strategy. We talk about that the superintendent shall be responsible for develop, developing a plan that implements the intent of the board and ensuring that it is reviewed as necessary. I'm going to want some more guidance in that area. I'm not certain right now I'm willing to put the, um, onus for the plan solely on the superintendent. I believe that the board needs to own it, um, whatever we move forward with. I believe this is a great start, but I don't, I don't want to feel like the board then is now not, um, involved, and I would like to understand how the review, um, could work and who would be reviewing it. So, conceptually, those are just some of the concepts that I would have brought up at the work session had we had time.
Thank you. Any other comments about what you're looking for in the work session, Ms. Young?
Yeah, um, so, did we, did we agree on anything today for a change? Because even before the work session for next time, are there any up, like, did, did we take any notes to say we're going to make some changes?
In the seven minutes that it was under discussion.
I mean, there's a couple of things that came up, so I'm just.
We agreed on a lot of things today.
So, the only reason why I'm saying that is because we're going to start next time with a work session, right? And then, yeah, so, okay, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll leave that then.
Okay.
I'm just saying, a couple of things that we talked about, I wonder if we could update those, and, you know, you mentioned that, at least bring that cleaner. Yeah? Does that make sense? Okay.
In, in the work session, I have a request. I'm, I, I'm not clear on why some disabilities are, are brought out here, given special attention. This, this adds in pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, but it includes disability. And my understanding was those would be disabilities. So, if they're disabilities, why are they singled out here and not other types of disabilities? Are we saying these are the only ones that we're going to give special status to?
Which disability are you referring to?
Well, it, it says pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions. I mean, I would, I wouldn't.
Pregnancy is not a disability. Pregnancy is not a disability.
I don't know under the, under the law. It's not, I don't, I don't know. It's not a disability. Well, are there other things that may not be disabilities that need to be in here? I, I don't know, but I, I, I think if we're going to, you know, start adding, maybe we need to take a, a view as to, you know, why is this added, and is there something else that be, needs to be added as well? And, and I am not clear on what genetic information is. Uh, maybe that's some easy definition, but if, if we're going to have a policy that says we're, we're going to, um, not unlawfully discriminate on this basis, I, I want to, I want to know what it is. Or is there, is there a definition for genetic information, or, I don't know how these got added in here. It's, um, I mean, it's, it's late tonight, but that's just something, and you can send us the memo, you know, we, we can look at it. But it's, I'm just curious as to how, you know, some, some things we've talked about before, um, but some of these are kind of brand new and, you know, first, first time around here.
Could, could I make a suggestion, please? So, the work session, I think I'm hearing from the board, is productive? If you have, uh, well, do, do we know when we're going to do the work session? Is it going to be the next, before the next meeting?
We, we should try to get it in before the next.
Well, since we're, since we may not have, we, we'll have to see if we're going to have the.
Well, it, it says pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions. I mean, I would, I wouldn't.
Pregnancy is not a disability. Pregnancy is not a disability.
I don't know under the, under the law, it's not, I don't, I don't know. It's not a disability. Well, are there other things that may not be disabilities that need to be in here? I, I don't know, but I, I think if we're going to, you know, start adding, maybe we need to take a, a view as to, you know, why is this added and is there something else that be, needs to be added as well? And, and I'm not clear on what genetic information is. Maybe that's some easy definition, but if, if we're gonna have a policy that says we're, we're going to not unlawfully discriminate on this basis, I, I want to, I want to know what it is. Or is there, is there a definition for genetic information or, I don't know how these got added in here. It's, I mean, it's, it's late tonight, but that's just something, and you can send us the memo, you know, we, we can look at it. But it's, I'm just curious as to how, you know, some, some things we've talked about before, but some of these are kind of brand new and, you know, first, first time around here.
Can I make a suggestion, please? So the work session, I think I'm hearing from the board, is productive? If you have, well, do, do we know when we're gonna do the work session? Is it gonna be the next, before the next meeting?
We, we should try to get it in before the next.
Well, since we're, since we may not have, we, we'll have to see if we're gonna have the, the advisory committee reports. I, I want to make sure we get them all in in June because it's not fair to them not to hear from them and get their recommendations. So I don't know what the schedules are, you know, how early we want to start or we can just put them at seven and go till, you know, eleven or whatever.
We're just gonna do what we need to do.
Okay, well.
Missy, can you put the board, I mean, no.
No, no, I mean.
I mean, like.
We all want, yeah, we all want a work session, to see, see when, when it's gonna work.
If people could forward your questions or issues, then some of it, and again, I do want to thank Lisa and others, so we could do some research and, and try to have the answers available at that meeting.
Yeah, well, mine doesn't require research because I assume that somebody knows why these were put in here, so it's just a simple answer as to, you know, why these were singled out and, and what else was considered. I would like to know what the, the general discussion was among staff or maybe it's with Dr. Chase and Ms. Decatur. If you all, did you all make these decisions or did someone else make them?
I think this policy was, a policy that's been adopted by Loudon and.
Loudon and Fairford, we could ask them.
Right.
Well, I guess we could, but if we're gonna adopt it as our policy, it should be our basis for putting them in.
So we'll have a, we'll go through a brief and that's, I think.
I think most of that is, are what we wanted to do today, to make sure that everyone had a good understanding of what this policy is, what it means. So we'll just schedule a work session and go through and make sure that there's a briefing and then if there are still questions after that, then we'll.
I appreciate it. And, and just one final comment. Dr. Kizner, we've heard several times tonight about the incident that took place at the beginning of the year, which was wrong. I think we admitted we were wrong. My understanding was that there was gonna be training immediately with administrators and, and staff so that that would never happen again, totally independent of any policy that we may be passing. I, I want to be reassured that that has been addressed, that staff has been trained, the administrators are trained, and, and we will not have an incident like that again, totally independent of this policy.
Well, the answer is, let me.
Was just wrong.
Look, because I think you used the term before on the record, we have discussed this at numerous principals' meetings. Do we have staff, like you heard tonight, that sometimes needs additional training? The answer is yes, for everything. You've had in the fall, when we had this issue on the agenda many times, many parents learning of talking about bullying and other issues. Do we do work on bullying prevention? Of course. So training is absolutely occurring, but to suggest that, and I'm not even, so again, I just want to make one last comment about this policy because maybe everybody's still focusing on the transgender issue that we had. This policy is much more inclusive, okay? And I just want to make sure that, that, that point is well, is understood. So, but to say, I mean, if you want me to say, here, it'll never happen again, I will say this, it should never happen again.
Well, maybe what I, I should ask is, and you can get back to this on that, what has been done to assure that it will not happen again? And I don't need an answer right now, but, but that's, it's been brought up on this board and by members of the public. I think, I think that we need to know that that has been addressed and that regardless of any policy, that is not acceptable behavior in any realm in Stafford County Public Schools. So I, you know, this is, if, if your board members are, are citing to it, then there is an issue. And, and if you can assure us it's been addressed, great. Don't need it tonight unless you can just assure us right now.
I would need greater clarity of what you're really speaking about, to be honest with you. Okay, because I think the issue you're speaking about is the incident at the gymnasium. This is much more, this is, that issue's been addressed very quickly.
Okay, that's all I need to know. I'm saying independent of this policy, that is an issue and, and the public has raised it, a board member has raised it. And, and the impression I got was that there is a question about whether this is gonna happen again. And regardless of any policy, I would think it will never happen again. It certainly should not, that our staff should be aware and trained and know what is the right thing to do under those circumstances.
Aware and trained.
I, I guess, I guess my, I, I think.
Not singling out students.
I mean, we need a policy. You're gonna talk about never happen again, there needs to be a policy, so it'll never happen again.
Okay.
There's a policy, right? That's why we need a policy.
I thought we were assured last fall it wouldn't happen again, so regardless, we'll deal with the work session, but independent of that, this has been addressed, correct? What happened?
Again, I'm not trying to.
Yes or no? That's all.
The gymnasium on a lockdown drill has been addressed, but this is much more than that.
I think that was a yes.
That is much more than that, than this. So I don't want to say what, one and done. We didn't just check that off.
We need to talk about this in a work session because I think that there's some clarity that needs to be addressed there.
Did you want to make a comment?
No.
All right, well, let's see, aren't we ready to. Eleven point oh nine. What do we have left?
Madam Chair.
Criminal background investigations. Yes, Mr. McOscar?
Hey, just real quick, before we get off, so are we gonna schedule a work session on this issue and then move forward? Is that what's gonna be?
I'm sorry, McOscar, you're, you're on a, like, a delayed, you know, phone thing. Yes, we're gonna schedule a work session.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Missy is going to, to find out availabilities with respect to time. It will be done promptly and we want, if anybody has any questions they would like addressed, send them to Missy, please, Ms. O.
Right, so I guess, you know, and if it's a work session and it's gonna be followed by a, an approval meeting, consider, you know, we might want to consider the work session be televised, that's all. Okay, thanks.
Well, I don't have any objections to that. And by the way, shouldn't this be on our website? I think we had a comment on that this evening, just puts this policy on there so we can have a link and people will know what we're talking about. Yes, thank you for that suggestion, Mr. McOscar.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm ready to talk about criminal background investigations.
All right, Mr. McOscar, we are moving on to the last information item, eleven point oh nine.
Oh, God, please don't let Miss Egan talk about criminal background investigations.
Just talking right up to him here. Criminal background investigations, all right, Ms. Egan.
The, there was a speaker tonight that came up and spoke to this and I agree with her one hundred percent, that doesn't always happen. So I, it's, it can't be a one and done, especially given some of the things that have happened in the past. We have to have periodic checks and require them to self-report. That's my opinion and I won't vote for anything other than recurring investigations.
And I'd suggest we even consider more frequently than five years, depending if we can get an idea what the cost is to do that and then we can make that decision.
I, I, I'm gonna jump in real quick, I agree with Ms. Egan and the speaker tonight. I think, you know, the, the world is moving to vetting and continuous vetting and continuous evaluation, so that's kind of a buzz term, that's what everyone's doing. So I mean, I think whether, what the continuum, what the continuum is, is whether it's three years, whether it's five years, you know, I think that'd be tempered with a budget analysis as someone just mentioned, so, yeah, but I, I am not one and done either. I want a, some sort of continuous vetting for our folks, thanks.
Okay. Dr. Chase?
Yep, I, I agree with Ms. Egan and Mr. McOscar.
Okay, Ms. Hazard?
I too, I'd like to know the cost.
You want to say something?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to.
She looked like she wanted to say something.
I, I did wave. Again, I would like to know the cost for that, maybe we get a bulk rate, however that would work. I would also like to be sure how we are going to be communicating this and if, I know we've talked about contract language in our onbar, onboarding with employees, that we really do need to highlight that this is an issue. And then I know this is one that I think we also need to just broadly understand is how long does it take when we have subs who want to come into our schools, how long it takes for us to get their background checked and are they allowed to be in the schools prior to that being released? I know we've had, it's been several years, but there was, well, somebody we did not really want in our schools, so I just think I'm, I'm not doing language, but just how we handle our subs because, you know, I, I just think that's another area. We just need to make sure that we've covered and that this needs to be something they answer as well.
Okay, Ms. Young, did you have something to say?
I saw that came in.
Oh, Ms. Decatur? Done? All right, we're done. The next meeting is June eleventh at seven o'clock and there will most likely be a work session before that and perhaps an earlier meeting for reports if the committees so desire. Thank you, we are done.
Good night, thank you guys.
Hi, Dwayne. She was so funny, he was just in that little slight delay and then, and then it was like, are we gonna have a work session?